I call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, May 17th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith is absent and excused. Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Matt Glear.
Here.
City Manager Petro.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the invocation tonight. It's by Councilman Daskey, and please remain standing for the salute to the flag, please.
Please bow with me. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you today in prayer and give you thanks before we ask for something in return. We'd like to thank you for this fine city that we live in and blessed to take part of as a community. We'd like to ask you to look out for our military men and women. We'd also like to ask you to please guide us and direct us as we make decisions for the community and for the City of Rockledge, to do the well-being for the community. In your name we pray, amen.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, the council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, May 3rd, 2017. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Forrester.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Presentations. We only do this once a year because we only have one graduation here. But we always look forward to this, bringing in our valedictorians and salutatorians out here and recognizing them before the City Council. It's a pleasure for us to do this, we want you all to know that. But I'm going to ask my wife to come up, and she's going to read everything so we can get this thing through at a timely manner because we have a lot of them here tonight. And Principal, come on up. We're going to stand over here, and as the student comes up, she'll be reading, she'll read a little bit about each student, hand them their certificate, then come over here and shake our hands, and a picture will be taken, okay? And don't leave afterwards because we have a brief talk.
These are statements that we received from the students' teachers. She is very driven and focused. She works hard to make sure she accomplishes every goal she sets. Denise carries with her a spirit of optimism that is infectious. She will be attending University of Florida, and her current GPA weighted is 4.58. This is Denise Ventura, and she is the valedictorian for 2017 of Rockledge High School.
Go Gators!
Yes.
Sam is a very bright student. She also has a great sense of humor and takes her education very seriously. She is a thoughtful young lady, and she works very hard at everything she does. She will be attending Florida Southern College, and her current GPA is 4.45. This is salutatorian Samantha Brewer. She is fun-loving, kind-hearted young lady who always goes above and beyond in everything she does. We all must have strong friendships, academic goals, and able to laugh. She is someone who understands the concept of balance. She will be attending the University of Florida Honors College with a current weighted GPA of 4.5. This is salutatorian Cosette Brown. Did I say that right, Samantha? Samantha is also a salutatorian. She is a conscientious worker. She works diligently to make sure she will accomplish all her dreams. She is attending the University of South Florida, and her current weighted GPA is 4.5. Samantha, congratulations. Salutatorian Juan Costa. He is an honor grad. He is very focused, very driven to achieve his goals. He had an early admission to Eastern State Florida College, and his current GPA weighted is 4.41, and he is currently a full-time student at Eastern Florida College. Congratulations. Go ahead, Mom, it's okay. Yay! Salutatorian Shay Doyle. She is unique and has a great sense of humor, confident and knowledgeable, natural aptitude in language, energetic, conscientious, always willing to help, loving, kind, and caring. She will be attending the University of South Florida, and her current weighted GPA is 4.46. Shay Doyle, congratulations. Salutatorian Hannah Hickman. Hannah is an example of the perfect student, if there was ever one. She is dedicated to her education, encourages others to follow suit, and she will be making a difference in this world. Attending Vanderbilt University, her current GPA weighted is 4.50. Hannah Hickman, salutatorian, congratulations. Salutatorian Christopher O'Brien. He is a go-getter. That's what it says here. Go-getter, and has a wittiness about him. He is a real supporter of his classmates. He is recognized as a leader and a scholar at Rockledge High School. Chris will achieve any goal he sets for himself. He is positive, enthusiastic, and a hard worker. He has a good common sense. He will be attending University of Florida, and the current weighted GPA is 4.53. This is Christopher O'Brien. Salutatorian Emily Sidore. A competitor in every sense of the word. She competes not only with others but herself as well. She manages to do this with a great attitude and brings her best to the classroom or the tennis court or wherever she is. She never gives up on Emily. Oh, excuse me, let me rephrase that. Never give up on Emily. She's in it to win it. How about that? An early graduate and is attending UNC Asheville College with a full-ride scholarship, current weighted GPA 4.47. This is Emily Sidore. David is outgoing, honest, talented, and well-liked by his peers and teachers. David puts all of his energy into being successful and helping others to do so also. He is a treasure because he does not know his real value. He shines in the classroom, in musical endeavors, on the tennis court, on the ethics team, and with his peers. His attitude and willingness to complete any task is priceless. He is worth more than his weight in gold. Attending Vanderbilt University, his current weighted GPA is 4.49. This is David Ward.
Okay, slide over to your left, just a few steps. Let's do this, let's make two rows because I want to get as close to you as possible. Make two rows. Is that how I'm trying to find the back? Is that where I get even closer to you? No, no, no. Just make sure that you can see the camera that we have got you in. Are we ready? Looking proof here, all three. One, two. Take one more. It's going to be hard to beat that. Let's do one. Okay, I'll do one, two, three. I am good.
Maybe I'm prepared to change.
Now, let's recognize the parents. All the parents stand up, please. Thank you very much for what you did. Okay, let's get our two athletes now.
Sterling here tonight? No? Okay, Sterling, he won, oh, she? She, okay. She won third place in the class 2A state championship 100-meter hurdles. Okay, and what about Danielle? Danielle is a senior, and this is in recognition of becoming state runner-up in the 2016-17 Florida High School Athletic Association Individual Bowling Championship. Congratulations.
Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. We really appreciate that, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting. I know most of you probably don't want to.
Kind of boring stuff up there?
Yeah.
They have to go home and study for finals.
Our city photographer will be sending the pictures to Mrs. Hickey so you can get copies of everything through Mrs. Hickey, okay? I don't think you could add up all four of my years and get a 4.58.
I said maybe if you took my two years together, maybe.
They pushed all my AP classes to end there. They didn't score in that way before. I'd had a 3.5, but not a 4.5. Which meant I didn't get any type of help, ever. I worked my way through school.
Okay, for our financial budget report for the month of April 2017.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Daskey.
Move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of April 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Boy, this is terrible, I have no.
Y'all can move up.
Rockledge is very boring, I guess, I don't know. Okay, let's start with our public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. Ordinance first reading adding a defined contribution plan component for fire, police, and fire employees' retirement plans. Who wants to take this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I offer an ordinance adding a defined contribution plan component for the police and fire employees' retirement plans for first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Orders of the City of Rockledge, Department of Florida County, Florida, and in section 5.6, quote, "defined contribution plan component," quote, to the City of Rockledge Fire Employees' Retirement Plan, adding section 5.6, quote, "defined contribution plan component," quote, to the City of Rockledge Police Authority Employees Retirement Plan, providing for a defined contribution plan component in the police and fire retirement plans in case mutual consent is not reached with respect to the use of premium tax revenue, declaring that invalidity portion thereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date of revenue for other purposes.
It's a pleasure, council.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr.
I move to authorize publication in a public hearing to be held on June 7th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. B, ordinance first reading, providing an executive option to opt out of the general employees' retirement plan. Mr. O'Neal.
Mr. Chairman, I offer an ordinance providing an executive option to opt out of the general employees' retirement plan for first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Orders of the City of Rockledge, Department of Florida County, Florida, amending sections 1.1, sub-16, 1.2, and 3.3 of the City of Rockledge General Employees Retirement Plan, providing the city manager the option to opt out of the general employees' retirement plan, providing for a limited exception to the prohibition of in-house distributions, providing for codification, declaring that invalidity portion thereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date of revenue for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize publication in a public hearing to be held on June 7th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Daskey, give us reports from boards and committees.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Fire Employees Retirement Board, minutes of meeting on February 16th, 2017. General Employees Retirement Board, minutes of meeting on February 16th, 2017. Police Employees Retirement Board, minutes of meeting on February 16th, 2017. Council Administrative Personnel and Community Relations Committee minutes on meeting May 10th, 2017.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, reappointments and appointments. Mr. O'Neal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, before he does that, I'd just like to make a comment about this as we start to get into these.
Okay.
We have one candidate, Ms. Busini, I believe it is, that has applied for multiple boards here.
Right.
And I would strongly recommend that we not appoint her to more than two boards this evening.
Okay, I think we're going to hear a report on that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've done a little background on Ms. Busini. Born 1996, young, she's interested. She's currently working as a pharmacy tech at Five Points Pharmacy. A number of our boards require some level of, for lack of a better term, age or business experience to make it happen. I'm not sure that she's ready, as Mr. Forrester said, for this, some of these boards. They're more technical, and the fact that she is employed, some of the boards meet during the day, and that that would possibly cause a conflict. When I was going to go through the nominations, I was actually going to completely leave her out. The city clerk did talk to her, and I talked with the city clerk because it's one of the things I have a great passion for. She's most interested in the tree board, and I think that would be an excellent start. Unfortunately, there's no vacancies on the tree board at this time, but I would like to keep her just on the sidelines, ready to go play as soon as we get a vacancy on the tree board, let her get a little bit of experience, and then bring her back into some other boards once she understands exactly what they do.
Can I maybe add something to that?
Sure.
Myself, being on all the boards I've been in the past, I'm a big proponent of the volunteers, and I agree with what Frank and Pat Abos said. However, I would not be opposed to see her be on the Business Development Committee because that is something that you can get in, get your feet wet, and kind of build from there. Now, if she's really interested in the tree board, that's fine as well. That would give her an opportunity if an opening comes along. But any volunteer, I don't think we can put her on the other boards, but I sure believe that she would be potentially an asset to the business development.
Aren't you supposed to bring business experience to that board?
You are, but you've got to start somewhere. And, you know, and again, I think it's a board that you can get on, and there's enough experience and background with those people on that board that they could actually teach her.
Joe, can we appoint her to, as an alternate to the tree board?
It depends on whether there's an opening for an alternate.
There's not an alternate position, but can we make one?
I believe we have to do a five ordinance.
Do we? Okay, but can't be done.
Well, it can be done, it's just.
Yeah, we've got to go, not tonight, it can't be done, is what I'm saying. Okay.
You know, I'll add to it again, if you put her in something like a business development, there's nothing that she can really do that would harm the city or the board. And again, I think it's a good opportunity to learn and to kind of get her feet wet and say, maybe she likes it, maybe she doesn't. You know, we've had that enough with other volunteers that come in and they actually leave after three or four meetings and say, that's not for me. But that's my take on it.
I could go with him without a problem. Mildly concerned, she applied for every board that we've got.
Did she apply for that one?
She applied for everything, even the school boards representative of the planning commission.
Right, yeah.
Which, she's not a teacher, remember the school board, so she didn't skip a block.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the floor's still yours, Pat.
Having heard Mr. Daskey's comment on the business development, I'd have one more question before we go any further. Did we make contact with Lee Nova to confirm she was still interested? Because I put her on two boards already. I've made the motion for her, so I remember the name.
Yes, the deputy clerk did contact her, and yes, she is still interested.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would nominate.
Excuse me, can we do reappointments first?
Can we do what?
Reappointments on the business development.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're way up there. Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Juanita Collins, Donald Dolestrom, Art Edwards, Daniel Hen, Darren Gibson, Lynn Roll, Amy Tid, and Paul Grossman to sue an additional two-year term on the Business Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now appointments. Appointments, there are no seconds on. Correct?
I'm sorry?
Appointments, there are no seconds. I mean, nominations, there are no seconds. Okay, so what are you going to nominate, Pat?
Can we do these collectively, or do they have to be done individually?
Individually, but you can make more than one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Lee Nova for the Business Development Committee.
Lee Nova?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Elizabeth Logan for the Business Development Committee.
Logan?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Gabrielle Busini for the Business Development Committee.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Lee Nova, Elizabeth Logan, and Gabrielle Busini by acclamation to the Business Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of Adjustment, go ahead, Pat.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a nomination for the Board of Adjustment. The only applicant we have in file currently is Gabrielle Busini.
Okay.
And I think we've, I think we're going to let her get her feet wet before we overwhelm her.
For you council people, we need to get the word out, we need to get some board members. Code enforcement, I have somebody in mind for code enforcement I'm going to contact, and some of these other boards. We need to get some more people up here. And some of these other boards, we need to get some more people up here.
Just the, I mean, it will be going in the downtown as well, we're putting a little pad in there, so.
Good. Okay. Next, C, Code Enforcement Board.
Mr. Chairman, again, on this one, this requires the position of businessperson and/or engineer.
Right.
The only applicant, again, we have is Gabrielle Busini.
Right, she doesn't meet neither one of those.
Therefore, I would recommend that we don't fill those vacancies at this time.
Okay. Fire Employees Retirement Board.
Chairman, I would make the same argument that Ms. Busini is the only applicant. And I think we have a lack of expertise there in retirement. So I would make a motion, we leave that seat empty right now.
I agree. Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Attorney. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can a city councilman sit on a retirement board?
I don't believe it's a good idea. And the reason being is that too many cross official duties, you know, when you're on the retirement plan, the committee board, you're involved in negotiations, labor, state ballpark, those kinds of things. It really means a lot of things to this group. So it would really, I think it would be, I don't know of anything that says you can't. But I think that you might open yourself up to quite a few people making shots at you for, what are you doing here, what are you doing there? Just.
Okay.
Just, it would just really muddy the water.
Another question. Can our finance director serve on one of these boards? He is not a city resident, but he's employed at the city, and he's also a member of the board.
Of the group.
Of the group.
I would have to take a look at the ordinance that deals with that to see if there is a residency requirement. But if he, if there wasn't, if there wasn't a residence requirement, then of course, Dave Henderson was on those boards forever.
Right. What do you remember, Brenda, on that? Do you remember reading something about residents?
I.
Or Lisa, do you remember anything?
I don't remember reading if residency was a requirement. Again, we certainly can research it and find out, but.
I'll research it.
I didn't, yeah.
Good.
I guess I know a number of other boards that see the resident or business interest. Certain, and they have kind of all different criteria.
Okay.
That's for the retirement?
Yes. Okay, so we have no recommendation for that tonight either. Okay, Citizens Advisory Committee to the Space Coast TPO. Who do we have?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This meet, this group meets weekday mornings, which may cause an issue again. I think that's something, before we go to nomination, I think that's something we need to determine, is when these groups meet. And we need to put that somewhere on our information so that they understand it is a weekday, normal business hour type event.
Well, I know the top two candidates there are young, are certainly young people.
Mm-hmm.
And at work, but I know Liz Riley would have no problem.
That's where I'm going with that.
And I don't know, I don't know Darren Gibson, I don't know him.
It says he's a NASA engineer, which if he's at Space Center makes it difficult to be resident.
Yep.
Daytime meeting. But we have to ask the question.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Liz Lark Riley as to serve as the regular member of the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay, do we have any other nominations?
Give me one second, Mr. Chairman. I'll nominate Darren Gibson, at least as far as.
Alternate.
Oh, he's already on two other committees.
Right.
I'll withdraw that.
You withdraw?
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Okay.
Confirming that he can do it, I would nominate Jacob Edwards to serve as the alternate member. Again, he's an employee of the Brevard County School Board, and I'm not sure what his hours are. He's a custodian, which may mean he works after regular school hours, so that may make it a fit for him.
I think I'd rather.
And he does not serve on the current board.
I'd rather have an engineer on the TPO than.
It's a citizens advisory, it's not a technical advisory, it's the citizen input, it's not the engineer group.
I understand.
It's the other group.
And I wasn't disparaging Mr. Gibson at all, he just, he's already been appointed to two other boards, one fairly recently.
Right. Okay, so we have another nomination. Are there any other nominations? We have the nomination for regular member Liz Riley. We have a nomination for alternate member is Jacob Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the council appoint by acclamation the two nominees.
No, Jacob's alternate.
Jacob's the alternate, okay.
Yes.
Right, Liz Lark Riley is the primary.
Correct. Okay, you have, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Everybody know what we're doing.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. O'Neill made an excellent point that I think part of our application process, we need to ask people what time, you know, if they can attend daytime meetings, if it can only be nighttime meetings, and so on and so forth, so that, you know, no point in us sitting here and nominating somebody that can't serve.
I do believe that Sherri, the deputy clerk, does ask them those types of questions. The Citizens Advisory Committee to the Space Coast TPO is a little bit different. All of our boards, except our retirement boards, do meet in the evening. So, you know, he does inform them of that.
Okay. Maybe something on the website under just particular one, two, from now on.
And it'd be helpful to have it on the sheet that we get, so that.
Okay, unfinished business, none. Consent business, Mr. Daskey.
Yes, sir, move for the approval of these consent business items. A is electrical coordination study, Tetra Tech for the wastewater treatment department. B is ratification of signatures of authorized offices/individuals for City of Rockledge financial accounts for the finance division. And C, long-term lease agreement, Old St. Mary's Church.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any, no discussion, this is consent business, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, action item, approval of final plat, Palm Cove subdivision, Martin Road. Alex, run, run like the police is after you.
Thank you.
No, I have rights.
He doesn't know how to read maps, I'll show Wayne.
He's very smart.
He doesn't know how to hold them.
All right, tell us what we got here, Alex.
Okay, this is a D.R. Horton development. It is 85 single-family homes off of Martin Road, which is just, just south of Phillips Landing. And there will be one access point off of Martin Road. As you will recall, about eight months ago, they came and we had the issue with the neighbor of Tuckaway. And we, at that time, you know, made the, we got to negotiations, and they're going to be putting in a wall in between the two neighborhoods, and they're going to be putting in fill as to not impact our county neighbors, so.
And we made some restrictions for them too, what were they?
The wall. You can't have a two-story home on, on the west side. And I think they're, the fill, that was, there was, I think that was it. It's all of the lots on the, on the west side of the development. They, I, they, yes.
And what are all these tracks, like Track H in the corner up here? Is that all drainage?
Track, Track H is retention, and then it also, there's a lift station there.
That's the lift station?
Yep.
Okay. Point one-three of an acre, that's the lift station.
Yep.
Okay. The bottom right, bottom right, see that little track?
Oh, okay.
And that, that portion will be accessed off of Tuckaway. So that's the only part that will have access off of Tuckaway, and that will just be for our guys to service it. Not anything other than that.
And all the other tracks are all drainage tracks, right?
Drainage, there is a landscape and signage track on the north side. And then there's also one where the mailbox kiosk will go.
Mailbox where?
Kiosk.
Here's the landscape. That's much more than mailbox.
They're naming it Whimsical Circle.
Isn't that great?
I like it, I don't know why, but I do.
Whimsical Circle. Those are always the best ones, you got the big backyard.
This center area here is a lake.
Yes.
That's correct.
That is a wet lake, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, hopefully if we get some rain.
Anybody have any questions of Alex?
No.
I'm looking for a motion to move forward with this.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the final plat for the Palm Cove subdivision off of Martin Road.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications at this time, are anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this council about anything to do with city business? Seeing none, we're going to move forward here, and we're going to go around the clock here. City Clerk. Did we have anything for the city attorney tonight?
Got city manager's report and the.
I really messed that up, hang on a minute.
You're getting ahead of yourself there.
I'm way ahead, I didn't turn, I didn't turn the page. City Manager Reports, go ahead.
He's hungry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be quick. But I do have a few things. The Florida League of Cities has a lifetime achievement award that we just got the literature on, and the nominations are due by July 14. And from reviewing the history of this award, the city did nominate former Mayor Larry Schultz back in 2011, I believe it was. So I just wanted to mention it before council to see if you all are interested in nominating anyone, whether you take action tonight or talk to me at another time, we'd be happy to complete the paperwork.
I have a question on that, did he receive the award, or was he simply nominated?
He was just nominated.
Nominated.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they get something just for being nominated, but they need, he didn't get the full award.
It's the biggie.
Okay, so if anybody has any ideas on this, and talk to the city manager about it, then we'll make some.
We need to do it by council vote on June 7th, or?
Do we have to do it by council vote?
So I'm asking, that's a question.
I, it, I don't think that it's required anywhere in the paperwork to have a council vote on it, but I can certainly speak to, if a councilman brings to me a nomination, how about I chat with all of council? Can I do that, Mr. City Attorney, just to let them know who was nominated? Or do I, should I do it at a council meeting?
What do they require of the nomination? Anybody can do the nomination, does it require council action?
It does not require council action.
Okay, so anybody can do a nomination? Anybody?
It says, yeah, I was going to say, actually, it says each nomination must be made on the approved form and must be signed by two elected officials from the city.
Brenda, why don't you express what you expressed to me in the meeting earlier today? Who you thought might be a great candidate?
Well, all of council would be a great candidate, so you're asking me to pick a favorite? I did express that Deputy Mayor O'Neill has served on a variety of committees and done work with the state and the Florida League and other legislative affairs. And unfortunately, not that it's a reason to nominate him, but unfortunately, we are losing his service at the end of this year. I thought that would be a nice tribute, just to certainly nominate him.
I'll be honest with you, I appreciate it, but I personally would nominate Larry Schultz. His tenure with the city was 25 years. He continues to be active. I know the people that have received this award since. He has an excellent chance, and I think he earned it.
I don't think you can go two years in a row like that.
Well.
He wasn't nominated last year.
He was 2011.
Was it a couple years ago?
Yeah, 11, 11.
And he's continued with the Rock Foundation, continued his efforts for the city, even though he has retired from the council. I think Larry by far is the, our best champion.
As a past president of the Florida League of Cities, he definitely has a stature in that organization.
They know who he is, because every time I go to a conference, they ask me about him.
Oh, yeah, a lot of people.
So make a nomination.
I would move that the council vote by acclamation the approval of Larry Schultz as the City of Rockledge's nominee for the Drew Harris Award.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ananmas.
Okay.
All right, that was some.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to let council know, the Veera Company, and they have a DRI mainly to our south, they have submitted a request for some changes to the original approval and authority given under the DRI. A few items, just to give you some samples. They're wanting to add post-secondary educational facilities with a maximum of 45 FTE students. They're looking to modify the development totals. They're wishing to increase office space square footage, increase industrial square footage, decrease the number of hotel rooms. These are just a few things. The City of Rockledge, as a neighboring community, had the opportunity to evaluate or review and were asked for comments on their requested changes. And as I'm told, the city has not ever written a letter. I'll use the word objecting, but it's a strong word, maybe not objecting, but expressing our concern, if you will. So the one item that they were asking to change was to not have the City of Rockledge be a part of the review process or at the table with regard to a transportation impact study that will be done. And we're going to, I was writing a letter under Alex's signature, because she did the word-by-word review, to express that we would always want to be at the table and have the opportunity to review, particularly regarding the transportation impact. So to our city is neighboring this community, we, so that's what, and I see heads shaking, yes. So that's what we will do, just wanted to make sure you all were good with that.
You have consensus.
Okay, wonderful.
Any information you might have would be of interest, too.
Okay, we certainly can share that with council.
Alex has got time now, that she's not doing the boat dock thing anymore.
Alex and I talks all the time how much we missed that, that discussion. One other quick item, as you all recall, you were kind enough to approve a donation of a 1998 Spartan Southern Coach fire truck to Eastern Florida State College in their fire science program. So we got a very nice, council got a very nice letter from Bill Klein, the program manager, just quickly. Eastern Florida State College is proud to offer educational classes and training for service area fire departments such as Rockledge Fire Department, and your donation will certainly help in providing those services. Because of your generous donation, we will simultaneously be able to conduct basic recruit training as well as advanced training, which will ultimately provide municipalities throughout Brevard with well-trained professional firefighters. Again, we thank you for your generosity and look forward to working with you in the future. So just wanted that to go on record. And.
Does that mean we get the number one pick in the draft when they graduate?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
City Attorney Litigation Report, do we have one tonight, Joe?
All three of them, all three cases.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so we need a, a motion...
Chairman, motion being received, the City Attorney's Litigation Report.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Joe.
Unless you have questions on the litigation, there's one thing I, I have been seeing pop up when it comes to public officials and their electronic devices. Your cell phones, your tablets, your texting, your computer emails are all subject to be requested and/or subpoenaed if for some ungodly reason you get somebody who wants to know something. If you have, if you have business-related, I mean, city business-related items on it, you have to preserve those the same way that the city has to preserve all of our records under 119. The other problem that you can run into is if you do get a call or a text or something that is, you know, city-related business, you cannot destroy it. And if you think that the cellular device people keep this wonderful big record in the sky of everything that you, you have and do, it doesn't exist. And so if you delete, no matter how innocently you do it, something that is key in a, in a question concerning city business, there's, the onus is gonna be on you to prove why it was deleted and try and reconstruct it. So unless you are forced to, do not use your private devices for city business. City should probably get each one of you, if you don't already have your cell phones and tablets, so that you can utilize those and that way you're private, if they take a look at them, won't have anything on it.
Okay. What I've always done in the past, Joe, when people call me on my cellphone, 'cause they give my cellphone out at the front desk, which I tell them to give my cellphone out, is always tell people to please email me with whatever request or whatever they have, so it's a record with the city clerk, and then I always, any kind of communication I do, I always copy the city clerk on everything I do.
And that's a good practice, but when, when we get issues crop up, and you, you remember, we don't get them very often, but when they do, the council, you're gonna be inundated with texts, phone calls, people stopping you on the street, which you can't do anything about, but, you know, you're going to, you're gonna be put under a lot of pressure. And you really need to have some sort of discipline to ensure, like you do, that anything that is city business-related is in fact preserved.
So if I get an email and I forward it to Lisa, that'll cover us.
That, that's fine.
And then I can delete it.
And then you can delete it because you have, you have...
Oh, you're gonna get flooded. It's, your, your, your computer's gonna be going ding, ding, ding.
We don't, we don't need your workout schedule.
You really haven't been doing that in the past?
He doesn't have one.
You haven't been doing that in the past? Because I was always told that day one I come in here, you, everything you get, you have to copy the city clerk on.
Yep.
The text message as well?
That's a safe thing to do.
If it goes to the city council website, that email address, is that copied or retained? Okay, so everything I do here, I only give out that address for city business and everything that goes through there is recorded. If I get something on my personal email, I send it to that and it sends it to my other email that way. So I've got, I get a record that way if something happens.
Okay, but if you get a, if you get something sent from the city clerk to you through the, and you answer that person, you gotta copy the city clerk on that answer.
If I respond, yes.
If you respond, you have to copy the city clerk.
Okay.
Even if you're talking back and forth to city manager, I always copy the city clerk on everything.
Okay.
If I'm talking to the city manager...
We don't have to save the emails that we get from, for example, the city clerk, do we?
She's got them on, she's got them copied already.
She has record.
Yeah, you just have to, if you respond to anything, you have to copy the city clerk.
I've, I've done that, any of them I responded to.
And the, and the scenario where you delete things that you believe are private to you before you do anything, that doesn't hack it.
Say that again?
Once it gets intermingled, somebody slaps us with a subpoena, we're gonna have to come up with everything that was on that device.
Now, you said phones, I've got personal phone.
Your personal phone, don't do business on.
No.
Or you can be like me, be a hermit and a curmudgeon, nobody wants to talk to you. But, you know, you, you, you have to be, especially with the way that electronic devices are being utilized more and more with different types of applications, Twitter, I mean, there's three of them that came out last weekend that Brenda, my Brenda was showing me, and I'm going, what the hell? I mean, and it's, but it's still a messaging and conversation methodology and...
So are you recommending that the city maintain a second telephone number for each of us, so we can maintain the electronic trail?
Yeah, if you, you know, if you, the city had phones and tablets or whatever you wanted to do for the council, whatever you thought was appropriate, and it might be a good idea, and then block your personal stuff.
Yeah.
City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I did not know Mr. Maniclier was gonna bring this up tonight, but I can tell you, this, last week and this week, I've had the very same conversation with everybody in the back of the room. The thought of having their own personal cellphone, and then, we've already researched it with Verizon, we have an offer and a deal, if you will, made by Verizon at what I believe to be a pretty decent cost, and free iPhone or an Android at a good monthly rate. So I carry two phones, as y'all know, and I absolutely do no business on my personal cellphone, only the city cellphone. I, in light of, I won't say the name, but in light of what's transpiring in a city to our south in recent weeks, I would encourage staff, those who are, well, I would just encourage staff to have two phones. Now, I'm evaluating city cellphone stipends, I've got the whole chart of who gets what and looking at all of that, but it might be a wise thing for council to also contemplate, as much of a pain as the neck, in the neck it is to carry two phones, it's a thought. But we do have some good rates right now and Verizon, like I said, is offering a free iPhone or a free Android if we go with them. So I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if you wanna speak to me privately, if you're interested, but we can certainly look at that for council.
And no matter how innocent you are, you feel that you're doing something or something is innocently done, when somebody is on the other side in an adversarial position, it is going to come back like it was a nefarious scheme. So best thing to do is to make sure that you've got a device that, and we haven't talked about this, but it's, it's, it's happening all over the state.
What about separate email accounts as well?
Yes.
Is that something that if we took advantage of this phone thing, we could set up a, an email for each of us on the server here and, and run it straight to our phone?
We certainly could look at that, Councilman. I know several of my, the staff asked that as well, and I believe it's a little easier to do that with the iPhone right now with our software, and you know, that's a whole nother conversation. But with my Android device, it was a little bit more of a challenge. So honestly, I don't have city email going directly to my city phone yet, just the calendar, which I'm here a fair amount anyway, so that's not too big of a deal. But we could work that out, and if y'all are interested...
I get a lot more emails than I do phone calls.
Okay, we can certainly look at that to make that happen and, and try to figure that out.
Set up a separate email account.
Get a sub-account for the, for the city, in Rockledge, it's its own email address, and then each council member can have a sub-account.
Yeah, we have an email, but we don't have a method of responding.
You have emails, so when you get an email at your city of rockledge.org address, can you respond to that?
It comes to my AOL account.
Yeah, you forward it, you're forwarding it over to us.
You're forwarding to my private account, yeah, I got it to Roadrunner.
So we cannot respond from our computers at home because we do not have a link to the city's email.
I think that Chris could more than likely figure that out.
But I think what, what I'm hearing is that we really need to set up a totally separate email account and then link it possibly to a phone or a tab, probably a phone.
Mayor and Council, with your permission, since we brought it up tonight, maybe we could do a little more research and come back June 7th with more thorough information and what our capabilities are? If that's okay?
It's a concern, we need to do something.
In the meantime, be careful, make sure you preserve things if it has anything to do with city business, and just be careful until we get some, some process that protects you.
Okay.
Good news, I only use my laptop to read the agenda. I don't do anything else on it other than not have to deal with paper.
There are some lawyers that I don't deal with them unless I have a letter, because, no. Anyway.
You're done?
Other than that, happy to know. Anything else, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. City Clerk?
Thank you.
Joe, you're done.
Yes, yes, sir.
Councilman Hartson?
Just a few things, if I may. The Kiwanis Club had its annual meeting the other night and we recognized our outgoing seniors, 16 received, or stole to go and walk in the graduation, as key club members. But the note is that three members of our key club have been the lieutenant governor for the whole county in the last three years, and we've got 85 members in the key club at Rockledge High School, so very active group. Kids are doing great. I also attended my first graduation at Eastern Florida State College, sitting on the stage looking out, it's a very different feeling than walking across the stage.
Did you graduate from, from BCC?
No. I went, we were up in Jacksonville when I went to junior college. But it was my first time as a teacher and to watch my students walking across, that is definitely a good feeling, Brenda knows it, what I'm talking about. Let's see, lots of other things here, Red Cross last night, that was interesting to be there for that. After you left, there was a discussion about the shelters and who goes where and how, and EOC described a lot of it. So that was, I've got some information on that I might forward. And I went to the EDC's Maiden Brevard effort they had at Radisson this afternoon, and I picked up, I don't know, maybe 40 cards, some from people who are working here, some that sound interesting to bring here. I didn't know that the EDC had moved to Suntree, I found that out today, I thought they were still over there off of Harvey Court. And just out there finding things out.
Great, thank you. Councilman Dasky?
I'll pass.
Councilman Ferguson?
Nothing.
Thank you. Councilman Forster?
I'll pass.
Deputy Mayor O'Neil?
A few things, starting at the top, I've got a couple travel requests, although I am leaving the council, I've not gone yet. June 15th and 16th, the Florida League of Cities Policy Committee meetings, I've been reappointed to the Transportation Intergovernmental, it's a one-night, two-day event, and I've got to register before May 26th, so that's our next, before our next council meeting. The second one is the July the 14th Florida League of Cities Committee meeting, it's a day trip to Orlando and back, no overnight. For those that are interested, the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference is in Orlando this year, it's August 17 through 19, and the city manager has expressed an interest that she would also like to attend, and I will share with you that a number of city managers go, it's a great opportunity for them to both network and participate. The last one, I hope to make one more trip to Washington DC with the Federal Action Strike Team. I don't have exact dates yet, but it's supposed to be before the end of my term, it's either September or October. So I'm gonna be asking for council approval for those travel days to represent the city both locally and in Washington.
Okay, I'm looking for, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion to approve Mr. O'Neil's travel for the June and July activities, and we don't have a date or anything for the later ones, so we'll do it later. That's the only two that are coming up immediately, right?
Yeah, and the August League of Cities Conference, the annual conference in August.
Yes, and that one as well. Mr. Chairman? I also would like to go to the June 15th, 16th, July 14th, and August 17th and 19th.
You wanna put...
I'm on the Energy, Environment, Natural Resources Legislative Committee. I'll amend my motion to include...
To include Hartson.
Yep, thank you.
Second.
And the city manager.
And the city manager.
All right, I'll withdraw my second, so you can amend your...
I'll amend my motion to include Councilman Hartson and the city manager.
I want to see her write this one out.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sean, if you wanna go, just ask, that's all.
Right.
The next couple of meetings, okay?
Next thing, for those, you haven't got the announcement yet, the next League of Cities Dinner for Brevard County is June 12th. It's in Malabar, it's at Up the Creek Farms. Our guest speaker, fortuitously enough, I also attended the Maiden Brevard thing, I saw Ted walk in, I was standing in the main lobby when you walked by.
I'm sorry, I didn't see...
The president of the EDC is our guest speaker, and it's gonna be a pretty interesting meeting. June 7th is our next council meeting, I handed every one of you something that looks like this. We talked a meeting or two ago about legislative priorities for both the city of Rockledge and for the Space Coast League of Cities, there's two separate entities. I'm not asking for a vote tonight, look at them, if you've got some more you'd like to suggest, bring them in there. I would like to bring it to a vote on June the 7th. And I have discussed these with the city manager, in fact, we added several after our conversation earlier today, so if you will, look at those.
Okay.
I also handed out a second thing, this is as the result of the Federal Action Strike Team going to Washington. I'm not sure if I reported on this before, I don't remember when I got the email, I found this in the back of my truck, and I couldn't remember if I gave you a copy or not. We talked about the FEMA clawbacks, where they're trying to go back as far back as 2004, saying, well, we weren't really right when we gave you that money, so we'd like it back. You know, we can't defend it very well because we don't have an employee here from 2004, nor do they have their employee that was there in 2004 that said it was okay. We've been fighting it, Congresswoman Lois Frankel, Florida, sponsored it and got it through the House. Senator Bill Nelson is doing the very same thing in the Senate, and this is retroactive back to 2004. So whatever decisions are made, and the whole intent behind this is that if the city of Rockledge has FEMA-approved damage and they give us money to make repairs, that we're city of Rockledge, if our project takes six months and Titusville's takes two years to complete, we're not tethered with a two-year timeline from Titusville, we are independent of Titusville, we have, they have three years from the date of our completion to say they're dissatisfied and they want the money back. We're not tethered on a, on a five- or 10-year program. So that's a huge win, we've been fighting for that every time I've gone to Washington from the original trip. So that, that's a win. My last thing is the 4th of July picnic. I cook on the Kiwanis Grill, I did the math the other day, and by the way, I've, I've got to hit 400 hamburgers this year to hit 12,000 in my 23 years on the grill.
We can hook you up.
And I will tell you, I did the math, that's 3,000 pounds or one and a half tons of ground beef.
Wow.
One quarter pound at a time. That's a lot of hamburger.
Homeless cows out there looking for you, O'Neil, standing in the pasture.
Mommy and daddy are gone, I cooked them.
He goes by the farm and the cows run to the other side of the...
This year, this year, my last statement, I am, I, I can't reach the back of the grill, it's too deep. I have a glove, I have a 36-inch spatula, I still can't get to the back, and to hit 400 hamburgers, I have Spatzilla under construction, which is a 46-inch long spatula. I already got her, just got her sandered out a little bit, put some polyurethane on there, and she is ready to rumble.
It's time to take to be short.
You're welcome to come lean over that grill, we lost our second grill team last year because of the heat. It was so hot at the grill, we have one fan, we need two fans.
Who are you telling that to?
Public Works Fire Department, I don't care, I think Public Works brings the fan, the Fire Department brings a generator, but the fans are critical, we lost one of the grills, they couldn't cook, it got so hot they had to walk away. It's hot. So anyhow, sir, I'll see y'all. So anyhow, sir, I'll see y'all whenever.
Okay, I got a couple of things. Friday night, moving to Park, that was a hit, that was really a hit. Last year, we did it for the first time, this was the second year, but the first time it rained, it actually poured, and it rained it out after about 30 minutes, but this, this Friday night, I don't know how many people were there, Pat, what do you say?
Six, seven hundred.
Six, 700 people, I mean, it was, it was big, and it was really cool, I enjoyed that. Tuesday night, myself and Councilman Hartzell and the city manager went to the 100-year celebration of the American Red Cross, and very interesting, I had no idea, I was asked to come there, but I had no idea it was about the 100-year celebration. And they actually have their petition to form a chapter, and it was May 16th, 1917. Last night was 100 years exactly that we were there celebrating, and there's some names, some old names in Rockledge that I recognize, and I'm going to take this RM Packard Transfer, which was a moving and storage company, and Robert Packard, who's in Rockledge's survey, I don't know if this was his father or his grandfather, and I'm going to find out, I'm going to take this over to him. And there's other names on here, everybody's welcome to look at them, see if you guys recognize any names, but it's pretty cool. Friday morning, myself and the city manager are going to Indian Harbor Beach, or is it in Atlantic?
In Atlantic.
In Atlantic, and 7:30 in the morning, we're going to, all 16 mayors are going to report, report on this, give a report of their city, and I'll be giving a report of the city. We did it the first time last year, so this is the second year we've done it, and it's pretty interesting, you'll hear everything that's going on in all the cities, and I look forward to that, and then hopefully we'll get back in time to be at the police department for the awards at, be here for, for the awards at 9:00 AM? Yeah. I'm hoping we'll get, because I'm going to give, give my report, and I'm going to ask to leave.
This Friday at 9:00, here.
Yes.
This Friday.
But also, I'd like to get permission from the city council for myself and the city manager and the city attorney to draft a letter to the retirement boards. I was kind of upset when I saw the reports from the retirement boards that they gave everybody raises on the, as far as the administrator and, and the attorney, and.
Significant.
I'd like to look more into this and talk to the city attorney, and myself and the city manager have discussed this, we'd like to write a, a letter from the council to the board members themselves, and just give them some facts about what's going on with the monies, and make them aware, not that they might not be aware of it already, which I'm sure some of them are, but I don't think all of them are aware of what's really going on. And I'd like to get permission from the city council to, and everybody will get an opportunity to see this draft before it goes out.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, I attended the last joint meeting, I'm trying to decide if I'm going to go to the one tomorrow, I don't know what my frustration level would be like, but.
They dismissed your idea.
I, I saw that they dismissed my idea, and back in November, I did convince them to postpone giving these raises till we took a look at that and some other things, and, and then I think one of the boards even did a retroactive raise.
Did they?
Back to March, I think. So I just, I, my biggest concern, I mean, and I, I have, I can certainly see, you know, we need a plan administrator, I'm sure we need an attorney, although I had a conversation with city manager as well about this, and whether or not we really need to pay the attorney for three hours of drive time up from Miami, and maybe we can FaceTime it or something, you know, and save some money. But my biggest concern, I guess, as far as the staff, if you will, of all of the retirement boards, is in the investment advisors, and I, I shared an article with the city attorney this afternoon, that she's going to read over before the meetings tomorrow, I don't know if you guys saw it, it was in the paper last week. Berkshire Hathaway has an annual meeting, and Warren Buffett takes questions from stockholders, and they can go for a day or two.
Right.
And everybody gets a chance to ask, but one of the things he talked about was that when he passes away, what he's going to set up for his wife is an investment in an S&amp;P 500 index fund. He likes, for her purposes, he likes that better than Berkshire Hathaway stock. So, you know, I, and I know that, like, through Vanguard, you can get an S&amp;P index fund for tenths of a point.
Point two percent.
Pardon?
Point two percent.
Point two, point two. So I'm, I'm wondering why we're investing, and I looked at those returns in those minutes as you did, and, you know, I, I see investment returns that are at the 19th percentile. Well, you know, and one of the things Warren Buffett pointed out in that article was that of the large-cap stock funds, 5% beat the S&amp;P index, and only 2% of the small-cap stock funds beat the index. And yet, these guys are still putting money into real estate investment trusts and, and all these foreign funds, and if you look, the only, now, they are investing in a Vanguard total stock market fund, and I think that's about the only thing they invested in that had a positive return that last quarter of the year, or the first quarter of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Or any significant positive return.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's why we want to, we want to do some research, and we're going to get the city attorney involved as well, Matthew, and city manager and myself, and we're going to, we're going to come up with some facts. And, and the biggest thing is to let these guys understand that these board members, what an important job that is to be a board member, and the fact that these guys out there work for you, you don't work for them. And if this guy can't perform for two, three, five years in a row, get rid of him. Get rid of him, there's no reason for him. So I need permission from the city council to go forward with this.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we encourage the mayor, city attorney, and the city manager to draft a letter and explain exactly what we just discussed.
Okay.
Our concerns.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. And is that all I got? And that's all I got for tonight, during this meeting at 7:18.